I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Good evening, everyone. This is the Village of Riverside's Board of Trustees, CNADA meeting for Thursday, May 2nd, 2019. The time is 7:01. Please call the roll.
President Sow.
Here.
Trustee Setteby.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Lumston.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present, Village Lord Caitlin.
Thank you. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to see a full house here this evening. Let me just take a moment to tell you how this evening is going to go. We have a couple of meetings back-to-back tonight. So, the first meeting is a CNADA meeting, which means this is going to be the last meeting of the Board of Trustees that you are looking at right now. We will go through our agenda. At the end of this meeting, the trustees-elect will be sworn in. We will then adjourn the CNADA meeting, have time for the new trustees to take their seats, reconvene for the second meeting. So, that's the plan for tonight. So, first up, our presentations and public comment. The first thing we have this evening is a very, very special award, one that I've been looking forward to for some time. And Chief Weitzel, if you'll do the honors, please, sir.
Good evening, Presidents Sow and Trustees. I ask Bill Smith if he could stand up. So, I'm in front of you tonight to honor Bill Smith for his years of service for the Police Board and Fire Board. Let me tell you a little bit about Bill before I get into the details. He's a practicing attorney, lives here in Riverside, has for many, many years. He's a partner in a law firm downtown. Graduate of University of Iowa, played football and track there, and received many awards for his play in football and in his track. And really, more importantly, Bill was on the commission when I was hired.[151.01][151.01](Laughter). So, Bill has been on the commission 39 years. I've been on 35. And so, I tried to do a little bit of research so I could tell, probably remind Bill and also the Board, really what accomplishments it is. So, he's been on the Police and Fire Board for 39 years. He has hired over 46 officers that I can count. Every single current officer on the department. Another 12 officers that have either retired or left us. Some of those officers went on to be chiefs of police in other suburbs. One of the officers is now the chief, United States Postal Inspector. We have officers that have gone to the U.S. Capitol Police from here. So, when they left us, they've gone to much bigger agencies over the years. But he was still directly responsible for hiring those. The Police and Fire Commission is responsible for the hiring, discipline, termination, and promotions. The terminations and discipline would be over five days. If I recommend that, if an officer wants to fight a suspension over five days, well, then that'll go to the Police and Fire Board. My role in the promotion process is to, we hire an independent company to do the written exam in the Assessment Center. The commissioners do the oral interviews for the candidates. Just as an example, last time we ran our exam, we had 188 take the written exams. We didn't have a single opening back then, although we did hire off that list. Then, they put in countless hours of oral interviews, usually in the Village Manager's conference room, sometimes always at night because the commissioners all have full-time jobs. So, we meet usually at 6:00, 6:30, sometimes 7:00 o'clock. And we've also worked weekends to get the interview process going. Because what happens is they get a certain amount on their, their scores are weighted on the written exam, their scores are weighted on the Assessment Center, and then their scores are weighted for the oral exam per state statute. But, what's really interesting is that Bill, and some of it, and another commissioner is here tonight, Pat Lang, and one of our newest commissioners coming on is here, Dan Durkin, taking Bill's position. It's really important because I don't hire the officers. I've told the Board that over the years. And my role is to give them the information they need, do the written exam in the Assessment Center, and then turn it over to the commissioners for the oral interviews and how the list... But these are all invested residents who want to hire police officers that they want to hire because they're residents. So, it's really a very fair process. We hire an independent company, like I said, for the written and the assessment. And these commissioners do the oral interviews, and they post the list. The police chief does not. And that includes the promotional exams. When I am in the room for the promotional exam, my role is to give the commissioners data on the officers, anything from sick time to, you know, production on the department, attitude, those types of things. They do the interviews for the promotions. They rank them. And it's really a fair process because in an agency our size, promotions are rare. They don't come around often. And it's really a fair way for an independent board to assess the officers and say, you know, who's worthy, and not have the chief select an individual just because I might like that individual. It takes away that, and these invested residents that are our commissioners make those decisions. Now, you know, Bill is known through our commission for asking a lot of questions of candidates that come in, but he's also been very knowledgeable and compassionate. For example, he does the "what-if" questions all the time, as Pat's laughing back there. The hypothetical is always done by Bill, usually ethical questions. But he also, you know, he would pull me aside when a candidate would come in on a Saturday morning, and they're here for a police officer's exam, oral interview. They've done very well on the written, they've done very well on the assessment to get in front of these commissioners, and they walk in in a tee-shirt and blue jeans. And Bill would lean over to me and say, "Would you go tell that kid that he needs to wear a suit and tie when he comes in for an interview? If he wants to be, you know, be perceived..." "Well, let's give him some advice while he's here." You know, and, and so, because we, you know, we're interviewing 21-year-olds to 35-year-olds, depending on, and there's a big difference of experience there with walking in there. So, he's always been a mentor. He's always given his advice to me, especially when it comes to discipline issues. He's always put the village first. He runs the meeting efficiently and effectively. He's become very close friends with the other commissioners. We, they're really, really good. And when you think that a Village of Riverside, if you hire a new police officer and the salary was advertised at $60,000 or $65,000 or $70,000, as the manager can attest to, we're probably paying $110,000 for that officer when you take into pensions, uniforms, police academy, health insurance. So, a single police officer is a huge investment by the village. And the commissioners take that seriously, and they want to get that list, you know, to have the right candidates. What usually happens is Bill will tell you the five top candidates are the five top candidates on everybody's list. So, you know, they go quickly because they're really, they want to get their job, and they're taking a test here in North Riverside and Brookfield, and they want that first job. And these candidates are, they're, when the commissioners ask them, "Are you on any other lists?", nobody appears in front of us that says they're not on another list, or has military experience, either one. So, I really, I can't say enough about Bill's mentoring. You know, when he hired me, he sat in the Village Manager's conference room, and there was a roll-top desk there. And the Village Manager at that time was Chester Kenzieur. And he looked across the Village Manager's conference room desk, which used to be an old wooden desk, and he said, "Mr. Weitzel, you think you could work here without being promoted?"" You know, and I said, "Why is that?"" He goes, "'Because promotions are really slow.'" He goes, "You could be 15 to 20 years before you even have an obligation, an opportunity to move up in the ranks." And we were joking about that a little while ago, a couple of board meetings ago, and I rose up to be the chief. And I said, "I gave him the answer he wanted."[539.54][539.54](Laughter). You know, nobody wants to say they don't want to get promoted, right? You'd be unmotivated. But they were being realistic. And I really miss Bill. I mean, the commissioners miss him. He's become a good friend, and he gives really good advice. And I'll tell you a really good last thing before I let Bill come over here. Two promotions ago, the commissioners sat the officers down that either had not finished their college degrees or were in the process of finishing their college degrees. And the commissioners told them, "Listen, if you want to move up the ranks, you need to get back to formal, you know, get some formal education." I have four officers going back to college now, in some capacity. Because when these guys speak about promotional opportunities to officers, and that it's competitive, and it's a small agency where little things make a difference, it's really refreshing that you'll have commissioners that'll tell them, "This is the path you need to follow in order for your career to move on." So, and I think they appreciate that, and I literally, that's the most officers we've had going back to college. They're either getting their associate degree, bachelors, or in one case, we had an officer just graduate with his master's degree, John Cairo. So, they do listen, they're motivated, and they serve well. But I just want to make sure that the Board knows that Bill's a valued individual. But everybody you see on the department, he was responsible for hiring, everybody. And I think when you look at our village budget and you see the Police Department being 50 or 51 percent of the entire village budget, that's a really big responsibility to hire these young men and women that come on that want to stay with us for 25 or 30 years. So, I have a plaque for Bill. I just want to read it, and then I'm going to turn the podium over to Bill. So, it says, you know, he probably has so many of these. My administrative assistant Pamela said she wanted to pick this one out because she goes, "He's probably got a full office full of these." But it says, "Commissioner William L. Smith, thank you for your 39 years of dedicated service, which is 1979 through 2018, on the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners. It's dated today, May 2, 2019. I thank you so much."[674.23][674.23](Applause).
Okay. Thank you, Tom. That was much more than I ever expected. And when I first got on the commission, 40 years ago now, if I would have only known that I had another 15 weeks or month and a half to serve, I would have gone another 15, you know, month and a half and made it 40. But, just a point, I replaced John Hoagland, Pat Hoagland's husband, who was the commissioner before me, and he was sworn in in 1946. So, he served a mere 33 years on the commission. So, it's been practically 73 years with two people on the commission, among others. I got to say this, it's a job that you couldn't do that long unless you had a terrific president and Board of Trustees. Because if you, as the police commissioner, hiring, firing, promoting people, were getting constant calls from trustees and the mayor as to who should be promoted and hired, you wouldn't last 39 years. I could tell you that. The other thing is, is you've got to have good chiefs, too. And I've served with three chiefs now, Tom Weitzel, Gene Karchuski, and Don Dineski, who just passed away. Those three chiefs really run the department for you, and those are the guys that keep the department running and keep you from having to have disciplinary hearings, suspensions, or firings. And thanks to Tom and his predecessors, they made it easy. We've only had, I think, two or three disciplinary hearings in the 39 years I've been on the department. So, I want to thank you trustees, the mayors, I've served under six mayors now, and Tom and his predecessors. And without further, thank you very much, and I know you've got a big agenda, and I'll just retire.[800.19][800.19](Laughter).[801.19][801.19](Applause).
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners is probably the most important commission in this village that people don't know anything about. They do their work quietly, but as you've just heard, they do it with great dedication. And the safety that we all feel because of the fire and police that we have is thanks to people like Bill. And it's almost hard to imagine 39 years. So, I don't know how to say thank you enough, but thank you for what you've done for our village and all of our residents, Bill. Thank you. So, we'll move on now to public comment. If you would like to have a word with the Board, I'd ask that you go to the podium so that folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. Would anyone like to address the Board? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you coming.
I was expecting Alex to come up and talk about something.
I was, too.
So, we all know the expression, "April showers bring..." Well, May showers, but it also brings Riverside Arts Weekend. So, just a reminder, May 18th and 19th, RAW will be in its 12th year. So, coming out to Guthrie Park, we have our juried artists again, lots of new artists this year, so I expect to see all the new and retiring trustees to come and check out the art. We'll have live music on Saturday and Sunday, food and drink, an arts tent for the kids. We're teaming up with Riverside Arts Center. And the spectacle that you've seen the last few years, expect to see that being unveiled in the village in the next few days. So, come on out to Riverside Arts Weekend, 18th and 19th. Thanks.
Thank you. So, the, tonight is a bittersweet occasion, always. On the one hand, we say goodbye to friends and colleagues that we've served with for many years. I've been on this Board with Trustee Ballerine for eight years now, Trustees Lumston and Setteby for four. It's sad to see them go. I mean, I think one of the things, when people look back at the service of this Board, I know when I look back on their service, has been the decency, and the integrity, and the civility with which these trustees have conducted themselves. We've had some pretty tough issues come before this Board, and we've had some pretty strong disagreements. But they have always been voiced in a way that I think would make our residents proud of their government. And for that, I cannot say thank you enough for your service and your integrity. So, thank you very much. I was thinking about the Tom Hanks movie with, you know, the all-woman baseball team. Remember that one? League of Their Own? And there was, there's a point in the, at some point where one of the players cries, and Tom Hanks is, "Crying? There's no crying in baseball." So, let me just remind everyone, there's no crying in village government, okay?[991.81][991.81](Laughter). So, let's try to get through this evening without some tears. So, that's all I have. Manager Francis?
I will be brief, I promise. I just want to say to the outgoing trustees, on behalf of village staff and myself, I'd like to thank Trustees Setteby, Lumston, and Ballerine for all of your work over the past several years, and staff has really appreciated all your guidance, feedback, and support. So, thank you.
In a few minutes after we get through our agenda, when we get to considerations under our agenda this evening, I'm going to ask if any of the folks who are leaving have anything they'd like to say to the Board or to the residents. So, they will, they will have their moment soon to come. But next up is business. We have the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening are the approvals of Bill's for May 2nd, 2019, approval of the Village Board of Trustee regular meeting minutes, April 18, 2019, file and review the historical commission meeting minutes for March 18th, and the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes and public hearing minutes of October 24, 2018. Also on the agenda is a resolution approving the release of certain executive session meeting minutes of the Board of Trustees, a motion to approve a special event application for a River Lantern Night to be held on Sunday, May 26, at Swan Pond, and a motion to approve a special event application for the hot air balloon affair to be held on Saturday, July 20th, 2019, at Big Ballpark. Does anyone need anything removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. By Mr. Ballerine, second by Mr. Setteby. Please call the roll.
Trustee Setteby.
Hi.
Trustee Peters.
Hi.
Trustee Lumston.
Hi.
Trustee Pollak.
Hi.
Trustee Ballerine.
Hi.
Trustee Jisa.
Motion carries. Next up are ordinances and resolution. First is an ordinance amending Section 7, 414, outdoor eating cafes of the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to requirements for outdoor dining cafes. Director Abt.
Yes. So, we have the owner of the Chuchu Saw Millie located at 33 and 35 East Burlington is proposing to build an outdoor dining area for his restaurants on the patio area adjacent to the building that he is located in, although not immediately adjacent to his units. The outdoor area is located on a portion of village property located at 45 East Burlington, between the public parking lot and landmark kitchen. Our current village code states that the use of public sidewalks or other public rights of way for outdoor eating cafes is only permitted incidental to the operation of a restaurant on private contiguous property and only along the frontage of said restaurants or other property immediately adjacent to said restaurants. So, therefore, in order to operate this outdoor dining area in the proposed location, a code amendment is required since it's not immediately adjacent to his units. So, staff is proposing a code amendment to 7414 to allow outdoor eating cafes on village rights of way or other village-owned property or leased property, and to allow the Board to approve them in another location besides immediately adjacent to the restaurant. Approval of this ordinance, adopting the proposed code amendment, would allow then for Mr. Zimmer to open an outdoor dining area in his proposed location. Staff did receive a comment from a resident somewhat concerned that the amendment also removes the need for a temporary use permit for outdoor cafes on private property. Staff has taken a look at this. There was some concern that this could leave an opening for there to be more nuisance possibilities on private property with outdoor cafes. So, staff looked at this with the village attorney, and we feel that a small amendment to this section stating that cafes are allowed as temporary uses on private property will allow for staff to evaluate the proposed outdoor cafes and impose any restrictions that we deem necessary per the temporary use regulations that are outlined in the zoning ordinance. So, that can be a small change that's made to the ordinance to address that particular issue. And I think Attorney Mars has already got it written up to include that change if the Board is agreeable to that. Do you want me to move on to the license agreement as well? Because we also have a resolution for that.
Let's get the, let's do the ordinance first. So, with that amendment in mind, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the ordinance.
I shall move.
Mr. Setteby?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lumston. Comments on the proposed ordinance? Please call the roll.
Trustee Setteby.
Hi.
Trustee Peters.
Hi.
Trustee Lumston.
Hi.
Trustee Pollak.
Hi.
Trustee Ballerine.
Hi.
Trustee Jisa.
Or the ordinance that passes. Next up is a resolution authorizing a temporary use for outdoor dining, execution of a license agreement for use of public property, and the construction of certain improvements. Outdoor dining area, and this is for fruit pudding group doing business as the Chuchu Saw Millie. Director Abt.
So, now that we have the change approved, this outdoor area that is not immediately adjacent to the restaurants can be used for an outdoor dining area. Mr. Zimmer is requesting to license the patio area from the village for additional outdoor dining for both the Chuchu and Saw Millie. The existing dining area along East Burlington would remain, although would probably be scaled back. The owner's proposing to build a wood pergola-like structure over the patio and to partially enclose the space with wooden kneewall panels to kind of help separate the diners from the adjacent parking area. It would have approximately 50 seats, a hostess and greeting area, menu board, and busing station for the outdoor dining. There would be some additional planters and some uplighting, and the hanging lighting from the pergola, and some speakers for background music. Couple of the panels will need to be removed in order to allow for snow removal. This area would be accessed from the public by the sidewalk along Burlington, but the servers would come in from the rear, from the alley, so they would not be obstructing the sidewalk, walking with food or anything like that. As part of the license agreement and consideration of the capital investments on the licensee's part to build this outdoor dining area, no license fee or outdoor cafe permit will be charged. The licensee will be required to pay for any electric or water usage related to the use of this licensed area, and they'll be required to provide access to the village for any maintenance or repairs of the existing streetlights or the irrigation system. The area will be available for village use during the non-outdoor dining months. So, if we wanted to use the area for things alike, public events like the holiday stroll, et cetera, that area would be available for that. The owner will also be responsible for maintaining and cleaning the licensed area. Additionally, in consideration of the capital investment and the fact that the village can terminate this license at any time with a reasonable notice, the license terms do include a clause that if the village chooses to terminate the lease for reasons other than default by the licensee's part, that the village will repay a percentage of the owner's costs of construction, starting at 100 percent the first year and scaling back by 10 percent each subsequent year. The owner has reviewed the proposed license agreement and is in general agreement with the terms. However, he is waiting for the village board to approve before he has his attorney review. He also stated that he would prefer to not be required to remove the snow in the area during the winter months, since he will not be utilizing it, but can, currently as it's written, he would be required to do that. So, that will be up to you to decide. You will need to make a motion with that change if you want to have the village take on the responsibility of the snow removal. Otherwise, it would fall to, to him to take care of in the wintertime. And that's mostly because just the equipment that we use can't easily move in there with the posts for the pergola to be able to clean, to clean that area. So, it would require a hand removal or a separate piece of equipment to get in there to take care of that on staff's part.
Okay, so before we discuss it, let's have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Mr. Setteby? Second by Mr. Lumston. So, I have a question. The, if the, if the end panels can be removed, can our equipment get in there then?
I know, because there's going to be a middle post, and so, in order to kind of clear the area along the side of the building, there's probably not going to be enough room due to the width of the brush that's on the grasshopper or the bobcat that comes down the sidewalks and cleans off the sidewalk. So, we ask that the panels be removed so we don't damage them, trying to make some of the turns to push the snow from the main East Burlington sidewalk into that first parking space when you do snow removal. But there's not really the ability to fit that through the posts to just kind of go in and clear that proper.
Because it's my understanding that that end post could be removable.
I don't know if the post is removable for a pergola. Typically, those are, I mean, the panel might be able to come off, but the post would have to stay.
Yeah, we should just talk with Mr. Zimmer more about the design aspect of this. Because the, when I, when I spoke to him last, we were looking at a design that, that the outside wall along the parking lot would have permanent posts to support the pergola. But the one on the ends, really, their function, as I understood, it was more to designate the entrance area and where they're going to have the payment and service area. So, we could just, I guess what I would ask the trustees is to let staff have the latitude to negotiate that part of the license.
I think the biggest challenge is going to be if somebody's shoveling the snow in there and they damage his property because he's doing a capital investment. That's why I kind of prefer this, is because then whoever he hires would bump into his own equipment. Otherwise, the village could have a snow removal person in there bump into what Scott's invested in, and then you got a finger-pointing debacle.
In the winter months, though, I'm not sure he's going to have any thing out there to damage, just the post.
The panels.
The panels, the wall. Yeah. That's the only concern I could see where a good thing would kind of, could turn sideways a little bit.
You could be getting a fling lift. There's, you know, you can do damage, and...
My view is, we shouldn't lose a potential outdoor dining area where snow removal. So, let's, whatever, whatever staff needs to do, make it happen. But I don't think this, this is a line in the sand that we should cross. And I do think, I think these accommodations the village have made are not for anyone that would just walk up, but clearly, Mr. Zimmer has been an amazing steward of his properties and a great contributor to the village. So, we need to do what we can to, you know, make this happen.
It could be some indemnification language or something like that is all right.
So, we're all on the same page?
Yeah. And then the only other one that I was asked to bring up is, is as the design proceeds, it would be really good when the furniture's stored, like all stacked up and stored and locked up when they're not open, to have some sort of screening. I think I get that complaint regarding LeBarre right now, is that they stack all their stuff up.
I think, I think his intention is not to stack, but rather to run a cable through.
That would be much, much better.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Pollak.
It's my understanding, corresponding with staff, that this furniture would be stored indoors or off-site during the winter.
During the winter, yes.
Right.
It's more like on the Monday winter.
Oh, you're talking about during the season. Okay.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Setteby.
Hi.
Trustee Peters.
Hi.
Trustee Lumston.
Hi.
Trustee Pollak.
Hi.
Trustee Ballerine.
Hi.
Trustee Jisa.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Director Abt.
Thank you.
Next up is a resolution and proclamation declaring results of the election of certain municipal officers in the consolidated election held on April 2nd, 2019. Manager Francis? Manager Francis?
The consolidated election was held on Tuesday, April 2, 2019. Three new village trustee candidates were elected. They are Kristen Evans, Alexander Galagos, and Edward Hannan. The Cook County Clerk's Office has completed the canvas of all votes cast and has issued the official certificate of results. Now I will read the resolution and proclamation. A resolution and proclamation declaring results of the election of certain municipal officers in the consolidated election held on April 2, 2019. Whereas the consolidated election was held on April 2, 2019, and whereas three new village trustee candidates were elected, Kristen Evans, Alexander Galagos, and Edward Hannan, and whereas the Cook County Clerk's Office has completed the canvas of all votes cast and the official certificate of results for Riverside Village Trustees is attached here too. Now therefore be it resolved and proclaimed by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, that Kristen Evans, Alexander Galagos, and Edward Hannan be sworn in as village trustees for a term of four years.
I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve by Mr. Ballerine, second by Mr. Setteby. Please call the roll.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Resolution passes. There's no turning back now. So before we get to the swearing-in of our newly-elected officials, I'd like to offer an opportunity to our outgoing trustees if they would like to say a word.
You're up, Jim. I had something I wanted to add. It's a little something I brought. I'm just kidding. As I stated before, it's been an honor serving with you all, and it's been an honor serving the residents of Riverside. I sent an email to the, to the village management today, and I just want to read this. Being around the village for the past three decades, like Mr. Smith, you've got four decades, and you've been around two, I've seen my share of village department heads. And what we have today in place is the best I've ever witnessed. As trustee, we come with a vision, but that vision is only good as what we can bring to fruition. And without you all, it would be hard-pressed to accomplish a quarter of what we've done. You are the ones that make us look good, keep our village up to date, keep us on edge, and keep our residents safe. I will always be in debt to you for your diligence, to the job, and your kindness to our residents. Thank you.
Gentlemen? That work? I guess I'll say a few words. This is bittersweet. There's two words that came up tonight that I already had listed in my little notes here. I've been involved with the village for almost 20 years now, so it's not just been a four-year run. So it's bittersweet to pass the baton, but there's also lots of ways to contribute in the future as well. I ran across about 15 years ago when I applied to the Economic Development Commission, you know, you have to fill out a questionnaire that most people don't take seriously. Back then, I think we did, you had to give your social security number, driver's license number, and all kinds of things that you wouldn't even consider doing today. But the question was, what's your vision for Riverside? It was EDC. And I said, "My vision for Riverside is not very different from what the village is today. My main desires are to address the village's growing financial pressures while maintaining its current strengths, to see a more vibrant and attractive commercial environment without compromising the bucolic nature of the community, and maintaining and enhancing community recreational activities available to residents, particularly younger residents." Pretty simple, but I think for the most part, I stuck to that. I think when we're elected, you have your pet projects, your pet peeves, things you want to accomplish, but I think when you go through orientation, which I think you all have by now, you realize the importance of public safety, public works, and the village finances. If we don't get those three things right, nothing else matters. So I can't stress enough the importance of those three things. Everything else is kind of value-add, but let's make sure we continue to get that right. I also, you know, echo Joe's thoughts on staff. We do a heck of a job with the facilities that we provide and the depth of the revenues and support the village can offer to our staff. And there's a reason we embarked on this facility study, because I wish, most people here, I'm speaking to the choir, but if you see the conditions that our police department works in, that our village staff works in, you wouldn't work in them. No one here would work in that. So we thank you for that effort, for sure. And finally, you know, after 20 years, Riverside's a better place today than it was 20 years ago. When we first came to town, the population was aging. The doors were closed. We didn't want anyone in. We couldn't bring businesses to Riverside. Downtown was a mess. We still have some work ahead of us, but we've come a long, long way. Things we're accomplishing now, you know, on the economic development front, making government easier to work with, is something I didn't think we would ever be able to accomplish 20 years ago. And that's thanks to the previous boards, again, and to the staff. So it's been an honor to serve, and I look forward to continuing to add some value to the community. So thank you.
I think it's better now that we can serve alcohol. That's really what it's about. You can now assign people to serve alcohol in town. So again, I want to say thank you to the staff. I probably haven't been the easiest trustee to deal with, and I'll remember that. But anyway, I appreciate all the time and effort. I know that I asked a lot of you, and we're Sonya, a lot of her, and the chiefs, and I appreciate, and where's Bailey? I can't forget you, buddy. And again, being the technocrat amongst us, I asked a lot of very challenging questions, and you guys always tried to get me the information as quickly as possible, so I do thank you all for that. The other thing I wanted to say is it's been an honor to serve the village residents, all the residents. I took it pretty serious that this is a trustee position, not an alderman or a councilman or a politician. This is a trustee, and we're entrusted by all the residents to act properly to and for all the residents. So that's probably been the biggest pride moment for me, is just being able to serve those folks that would reach out to me. And again, I think for the new trustees coming in, try and get that feedback. It was very helpful to get tons of emails and to have people feel comfortable to stop by. I think that that's probably the most important thing and probably the most rewarding thing that I had going during my time. And there's five things to focus on: police, fire, water, I always say poop, but I should say sewage. We've got to have a safe sanitary system so that we all stay healthy, and then obviously the communal property. And that's going to be a challenge over the next few years, because we do need some new facilities somehow. So thank you very much for my time.
So now we're going to swear in three folks who obviously have some pretty big shoes to fill from what you just heard. So Madam Clerk, if you'll do the honors, and I would first ask trustee-elect Ms. Evans.
If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kristen Evans, do solemnly swear.
I, Kristen Evans, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And in our next meeting, we're going to offer the new trustees a chance to say something, so they'll have their moment to say a few words as well. Trustee-elect Galagos.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Alexander Galagos.
I, Alexander Galagos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And trustee-elect Hannan.
If you'd raise your right hand. I, Edward Hannan, do solemnly swear.
I, Edward Hannan, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Having no further business with this existing board, I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn, seeing ADA.
So moved.
By Mr. Lumston, second by...
Go ahead. Second.
By Mr. Setteby. Please call the roll.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.